Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 9th, 2019. Approve the council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, I don't have any additions or corrections at this time.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Implication, New Journey Church. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you all tonight?
Well, we talked about the snow already, so.
Yeah. It's coming. Like it or not, we might as well roll with it. So, I got pottery drying and I'm actually looking forward to the heat going on again because it's taking too long to dry. So, I want to begin tonight with some words from a book called The Cherokee Feast of Days. It's a meditation book by Joyce Sekwicci-Hilfler. And she says, "Time equalizes rivalry, so that love and friendship finally have a chance to bloom. But the long wait is not necessary. It can happen as soon as one person is glad because another person is glad. Love is not dependent on deserving it. If that were so, none of us would be loved and most would be barbarians. Who we are is not what someone else made us to be but what we thought and said we could be. Love is cultivated so that we can communicate it to one another." And she ends with the words of Black Hawk, who is a sock. "Everyone makes his feast as he thinks best, to please the great spirit who has the care of all created beings." I give thanks for each and every one of you tonight. I give thanks that you have chosen to serve Hutchinson and give the best of yourselves so that the lives of all of our citizens can be enriched. I know that it is not always an easy task that you have taken on. I know that there are conflicting opinions and needs that you balance each and every time you meet. And so, on this night, I'm going to ask you to just pause and focus. Pray if it is your way. If not, simply focus for just a moment on that which gives you guidance and wisdom and May your work here tonight reflect love. May it cultivate health and wholeness for every resident of and visitor to Hutchinson. May you be builders of bridges, equalizing each rivalry that threatens to tear us apart. And may you find peace, knowing how many of your citizens appreciate what you do here. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think Jeff, Mr. Olson has got something to mention here.
Mayor and council, on behalf of the snowplow operators in Hutchinson, and that includes the county and the state folks as well, we were recipients of a small bag of goodies, a little lunch bag full of goodies with the following poem attached. I didn't do real well in poetry in schools, but I'll try my best here. "Spring is here, we give a cheer for all the work you did this year, from plowing snow to forty below. Your commitment to people helped traffic flow. So many tasks go unseen, streets cleared and sidewalks cleaned, getting mowers ready for spring. We can't wait for the color green. Thanks again for all you do. We couldn't survive without you. Please enjoy some treats from us and hope you can relax a bit, too." From twelve ordinary women, who are anonymous. So, I just wanted to acknowledge them and say thank you, and their gift was much appreciated. So, thank you.
I believe that that gift will push back the snow, so.
That's right. One more. We might have one more bag coming. I don't know.
Maybe you better save half of it. Do have a proclamation. Whereas trees and forest soils keep our lakes and streams clean by absorbing and filtering pollutants and sediment, and whereas forests prevents flooding and reduces stormwater by capturing and storing rainwater and snowmelt, which is then slowly released into our lake streams and groundwater, and whereas careful management of our trees and forests protects drinking water and reduces the cost of water treatment, and whereas sound management of the forest lands surrounding the Mississippi River ensures clean drinking water for more than one million Minnesotans, and whereas about three-quarters of Minnesotans get their drinking water from forest plants, parts of the state, and whereas planting and maintaining trees is a natural and easy way to keep our water clean, and whereas the last Friday in April and throughout the month of May, Minnesotans pay special tribute to our trees and natural resources and dedicate ourselves to the vitality of our forests. Now, therefore, I guarantee foresee or may of Hutchinson hereby proclaim April 26, 2019 as Arbor Day. All right, and we have a couple resolutions. We have resolution number 15022, resolution accepting $60,000 donation from the Birch Foundation of the Minnesota Community Foundation for purchase of a new Zamboni ice resurfacer. Is that all right? I can, I'll do both of them. Resolution number 15027, resolution accepting $3,504 donation from Glenn Kurth for the new benches at Veterans Memorial Field.
Mayor and council, obviously, the $60,000 generous donation will help to replace, I believe it's our $2,000 Zamboni. We actually received, since the donation, we went out and we did receive a quote for about $142,000, which is about $25,000 less than what we had originally budgeted in the CIP. So, we're looking at with this donation that the overall cost to the city will be about $80,000 to purchase it. So, obviously, we want to thank the Birch Foundation for the generous donation, and then.
Again.
Again, yeah, this is multiple times they have donated, along with Mr. Kurth, who has multiple times donated, whether it was a scoreboard or other items to be in that field. So, obviously, I want to thank both of those, or that individual and that foundation for their generous donations.
Motion to accept. Second. Second. I'll let you have that one, Dave.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion by Steve, second by Dave to accept the donations. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's all right. I get the, it's just the other way around at home.
No comment.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll have public.
You'll hear it when you get home.
Yeah, I know. I always am. Citizens addressing the council, anybody wants to address the council? We do have.
Lieutenant Still.
Lieutenant Still, soon to be Chief Gifferson here. He's going to address us about the turkeys, Mary.
Oh, boy.
Mayor, council, others, thank you. It's my understanding, over the last couple council meetings, there's been some discussion about the wild turkeys roaming within the city. And so, I've been asked to maybe come and give a little bit of history as to our battle with the wild turkeys and what we've done, what we're able to do, and maybe what we plan on doing in the future. So, I believe it was spring of 2016 is when we really started receiving some complaints in earnest regarding the wild turkeys in the neighborhood of Second Avenue and Lake Street. For the most part, that was it. Over that summer, we continued to receive complaints. Part of the issue is, is one neighbor finds them to be a pest while the other neighbor likes them and feeds them, and in one case fed them out of his garage. So, which makes it very difficult for us to try to control the population, especially when it's very easy for a wild turkey to fly from one side of the river into the sanctuary on the other side of the river. So, we did come up with a plan with the Department of Natural Resources, a fairly limited plan, I might say. They did grant us, I believe it was 10 permits in the spring of 2017, to harvest turkeys. Right now, we estimate there's a flock of between 30 to 40 turkeys that roam that neighborhood right now. I think some people living in that neighborhood would guess it to be much larger, but my understanding is wild turkeys generally stay within that 30 to 40 bird count before they start kicking some of their flock out, so to speak. So, I think our estimate is fairly accurate. But as you can imagine, if, if the Department of Natural Resources is only allowing us to harvest 10 birds, that doesn't do much to control a flock that could probably hatch two, I don't, I guess I don't know what the term is, broods maybe, per summer. So, you know, we have tried to do that. We've purchased some net guns that have been somewhat successful in capturing them, but the Department of Natural Resources won't allow you to relocate turkeys. Once they're captured, they have to be harvested. And so, what we had been doing is bringing them to a local meat locker, they would process them and then donate them to the food shelf. But turkeys are smarter than you give them credit for, and they're very good about when they.
They know when the police car is coming.
They do know when a police car comes. So.
Need a disguise.
Yes.
Under cover.
So, to be honest, we have resorted to grabbing personal vehicles and approaching them that way. I'm not kidding. It sounds comical, but it is true. But again, the net guns that we do have have a limited effect. So, so that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if there's a really good answer that I can give you right now as to how to do this, until the Department of Natural Resources allows us to harvest them all. There's going to be this ongoing problem, in my opinion, so.
You know, a couple things. When we, you know, we met with the DNR back in 2016, and you know, the general statement is that these are wild birds. And so, that is the way that the DNR treats them, which means we fall under the same guidelines as everyone else does when it comes to wild animals, meaning essentially you can only hunt them when it's hunting season, and oh, by the way, we don't allow hunting within city limits. And so, there's really not a whole lot, like I said, they gave us that one year, you know, permits to harvest 10, and that's essentially what we have to look for again, is their willingness to allow us to harvest.
Correct.
Certain amount.
So, have we harvested 10 every year since then, or?
We have never been able to harvest 10.
They are sneaky, aren't they?
I'm not joking when I say they, they recognize a police car. So, unless we look at more creative ways of approaching them, that's kind of where we're at, so.
You know, and really, I think the community can help out by not feeding them.
That would help immensely, yes.
And not, you know, basically not feeding them or giving harbor to them within their own properties.
Yeah, I think that's probably the key to this whole issue, is we have to come to a consensus that either they're a pest or they're nice to have around. And as a, as a city, we, we have to probably make that decision before we go any farther with it. I think if you, if you polled the community or polled that neighborhood, you would probably have a 50-50 split on how everybody views the turkeys.
You know, and one of the things that we didn't do at the time, and I want to say we maybe had a discussion, and some communities have gone this route, is to enact ordinances that prohibits the feeding of them. Now, I think that, obviously from enforcement issue, creates a whole nother issue, but.
That would be exciting.
Yeah. That's something that we have not pursued in the past.
Right.
How close do you have to be to shoot them with a net gun?
Within probably 15 feet.
Sure. Pretty close.
Yeah. And I've, I've viewed other online techniques that have been used more in an open field where they have, actually have a jet-propelled net that can capture 10 to 15 of them at a time. But again, we don't have the, the area where that would, we could accomplish that, so.
And the DNR won't, that's what they want us to use, is a net gun, or is that what we?
They haven't specified. It's been the, I think, Matt's and Chief Hatton's view that we really don't want to use other means.
Sure.
That may be a little bit more dangerous than firing a net gun.
Sure.
That's, it's helpful to know the limit that they're providing, because I guess I was under the understanding that we were allowed to keep in two, like 10, a number of 10.
Sure.
But you're saying we're only allowed to take 10, so.
Yes.
Which.
You know, I think when we adopted our policy, that was our, our goal, but.
At 20 at the time.
Yeah, but I think the problem is being able to capture, which is really.
Just the numbers when they have 10 or more eggs at a time.
Correct.
Do we have any police officers that are archers that we could, you know, I mean?
We do, we do have, but again, up until this point, that's not been an option that we really wanted to look at.
Sure.
Well, I think that we'd kind of have parents a little mad if the kids view a turkey being shot.
Do it during the day, when the kids are in school.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think you can all see that there's certainly, there's.
It's a can of worms.
Kind of have your hands tied, in a way.
Yeah, somewhat, and, and if you're, if you're trying to please a certain segment of the population, the other segment is not going to agree with that. So, I think the city administrator has a great point, if, if it comes down to it, although it would be very difficult to enforce if we pass some kind of an ordinance about the feeding of wild animals within the city limits, probably would be the best scenario. And again, admittedly, that's going to be difficult to enforce.
So, did I?
But you know already that's, you know, people do it, so.
Yep.
But did I understand you when you said usually there's 30 to 40 of them, and then they start kicking them out, so then?
Again, some of the research that I've done is usually that flock reaches about 30 and before they start, I guess, kicking out the, the jakes.
Creating rival flocks.
Yeah. And then, so.
Turkey gangs in town pretty soon.
So, apparently, you may see the main flock, and then you may see a small group of jakes running around by themselves, trying to find their way, apparently, so.
Right, of course.
So, Tom, have we approached the DNR again this year to see if we can harvest some more?
We have not. So, I guess that, I can take that direction back to Chief Hatton, and we can explore that again for this year.
And I think that's probably our, our best, but even if it's all we can get, so.
When you approach them, do they fly?
No.
They just run?
They run. But they're fast.
They're not when they're on the street going, sitting there and look at you.
So, the other part is what can people do, and on the DNR's website, they do have a page about living with wild turkeys.
We have actually put that on our own public safety site as well, so.
They've not, they've not attacked anyone.
Oh, yes.
I think during mating season, they can be somewhat aggressive.
Yeah, they can be aggressive.
There's one lady that.
So, it can geese.
Yep.
Says here, "Turkeys which repeatedly challenge or attack children or elderly persons or otherwise threaten public safety." And they have to be just.
Yeah, I think it's just important, though, I mean, because I know a lot of times it, you know, pressure gets put on us, but we are very limited, you know, because they are wild animals.
Correct.
Tom, but when you maybe have Chief Hatton, when he does contact the DNR and, you know, state that we do have a bigger flock, maybe, see if they can up the number?
Yeah, I, we certainly will ask for as many permits as they'll grant us, and hopefully that will be the case.
But the issue lies in that they're just hard to shoot with a net gun, so.
And we may have to revisit how we capture them, too, so, again.
You'll have to have your officers dress as ninjas or something.
Probably not. I have people that work kind of higher out to help with geese. Are there people that contract?
Yeah, potentially. I think with anything, there's going to be a given expense for it.
Sure.
So, certainly, you could stalk, I mean, the turkey flock and wait for them, just like a normal turkey hunter would do, and, but again, you're paying an officer their hourly wage to sit there and wait for a turkey to happen by, so it could get a little expensive.
What I'm saying, there might be other people available to do that, and more experienced and.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you. Again.
Be more for us to work with, with the DNR?
I think that's, I think that's probably our next step, is really finding out, okay, what's the DNR going to allow us to do? I mean, because it's, it's obviously a balloon, which I know we had a concern of at the time, but it's grown into a larger problem now. You know, what's the DNR going to allow us to do, and then what are some options that we could potentially pursue to, to take on that?
We'll continue to look into it.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. We have the regular meeting minutes of March 26, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Steve to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda, be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A, approval of South Grade Road traffic signal materials. B, approval of out-of-state travel for Kent Exner to attend the Public, American Public Works Association National Conference in Seattle, Washington, from September 7th through the 11th, 2019. C is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Saturday Night Cruisers Car Club. D is approval of resolution number 15023, resolution approving, approving State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement with the City of Hutchinson on behalf of its police department regarding the Minnesota Internet Crime Against Children Task Force. E is approval of resolution number 15024, resolution amending the city flexible benefit plan to designate Sun Life and Assurance Company of Canada as the dental claims administrator of the plan. F is approval of items for Fifth Avenue South Reconstruction Project, letting number one, project number 1901. And underneath there is resolution number 15025, resolution declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparations of proposed assessments. And resolution number 15026, resolution for hearing on proposed assessments. G is approval of resolutions for the Department of Education Library Grant. Underneath there, we have resolution 15028, State Library Construction Grant, and resolution number 1529, authorizing matching funds for the library construction grant from the Minnesota Department of Education. Resolution number 15030, State Library Construction Grant. Resolution number 15031, authorizing matching funds for the library construction from the Minnesota Department of Education. H, appointment to boards and commissions, Margaret Hoff to the library board, to April 2021. And I as claims appropriation and contract payments, register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
Got a quick question on G.
Let me approve the balance.
I'll make a motion to approve the balance.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the balance. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Mr. Chalkum.
I guess, Dan, I was just wondering about the roof one, you know, in the capital improvement plan, you know, it was like 175,000, and it was for SOFIT and FACIA. Is that the same project, and we just got a better price then?
Yeah, I believe it is. We did get a better price than we originally anticipated, and obviously, this grant project also offsets some of that, so that is the same work that we're intending on.
Okay. Just didn't know if, again, the price for the quote versus, you know, what.
Sure.
Was estimated earlier on or set aside, so.
Exactly. Any other questions?
Thanks for looking out for those grant opportunities and JJ.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda number two, claims appropriation, contract payments, register B. Do have a check on there for my company that was for the remodeling at the fire station. They put a door and side light in for the chief's office and assistant chief's office, and so, make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Do not have a public hearing. So, Miles, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a brief, a brief report about the Economic Development Authority, just providing you guys with an annual report. So, I will talk about some of the highlights for 2018, and then at the end of that, I'll be very happy to answer any questions that you or the audience may have. The single biggest thing that we worked on right now is skilled workforce development, because as I talk with our manufacturers here in town, that is the thing that I hear about all the time, over and over again, and everyone agrees that is the single most critical issue that's out there right now. And I don't know how many people know this, the very first meeting that we had with Upanor, that it was just one subject on the agenda, and it was for. that it was just one subject on the agenda, and it was for Upanor executives came to Hutchinson, and it was me and Mike Bame, who was the dean of instruction at Ridgewater College. So it was just the two of us, and then four Upanor executives, and the one question, what are you guys doing for skilled workforce development? And so this is a really a critical issue, and you guys, I'm sure no doubt have noticed, there are signs everywhere. And I, I had to note this one in the middle here, now hiring now, right now, we're hiring now. And that's a common thing. I was in a meeting just Friday last week with a local company, just dying for workers, and what can we do? We need to hire 15 people, like, right now. And, you know, they're genuinely concerned about where's this all going to go? So, as a result, this is the single biggest thing that we work on as an economic development authority, and justifiably so. Number of surveys have come out over the years, so this one in the upper left on the screen, the National Association of Manufacturers, in a 2018 survey, 73% rated attracting and retaining a quality workforce as their number one concern. And then bottom right is a survey done by US Bank, and again, the top concern was recruiting, developing, and retaining talent. So that's what, that's what drives us at the Economic Development Authority, because it not only helps our existing businesses, but also we're finding it's a critical tool for recruiting the next company to come to Hutchinson. So you've all heard and been well aware of the Tiger Path Initiative now. This is what we're doing locally to develop new skilled workforce, and really, we're highlighting this as a new national model for skilled workforce development. 3M calls it a national model, they're promoting it all over the place, and it's getting more and more attention. So just a quick update on where we're at with Tiger Path, you know, we have a whole bunch of partners involved. It's not only 3M, but many other manufacturers and employers around town. Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry is in on it, Southwest Initiative Foundation, the EDA, of course, the school district, and Ridgewater College. So between 28 partners, we've raised over a million and a half dollars to help move this initiative forward. And it revolves around, it's really focused on high schools. It, it really, we think the solution to the skilled workforce shortage, it's, it's the people that are in ninth and 10th and 11th and 12th grade. That's where we're going to find the skilled workers that we need. So the strategies all kind of build around that, so it's about realigning high school education with the implementation of the Tiger Path Academies. Over at Hutchinson High School, it's building educational pathways between high school and college, particularly Ridgewater, because that's local. We want to change outdated stereotypes about manufacturing, education, career, gender in the workforce. We want to build as many relationships as we can between the school and employers. We wanted to dramatically upgrade the technical education facilities at the high school, and then also the sixth strategy is to launch Tiger Manufacturing, which is going to be a, a student-run manufacturing business. It'll be an authentic manufacturer here in Hutchinson. So what have been the results? We've been working on this for, gosh, probably four years now, at least, I think, since I've been involved in it. So we've got the Center for Technical Excellence established at Hutchinson High School, and to the best of my knowledge, that is, hands down, the best-equipped, most-advanced facility of its type of any high school in Minnesota. I've been in quite a few high schools, I haven't seen anything that comes close to what we have here in Hutchinson. Other results, you know, we've seen enrollments change, enrollment patterns have changed over at the high school, so they have these pathway classes, which is like the first one in a series, so welding one, for example, would be a pathway class. And I believe they have a 20-some-odd manufact, uh, 20-some-odd pathway classes over at the high school. I just graphed out three of them, but since they implemented the Tiger Path Academies, which was 24, 2015, we've seen enrollments in these classes just take off like a rocket, and so that's been very exciting to see. Just in the last year now, we've rolled out a new applied engineering class at Hutchinson High School, and one of the fun things about it, it's a young lady that teaches that class, so that helps us defeat outdated stereotypes about who can do what. We had 120 students sign up for this class, there's five sections, and we're excited because there's 45 gals that are taking this class, so that, we think, is a pretty neat outcome. Another result, just in this last year now, we've hired a full-time Tiger Path coordinator, it's an employee of the school district, but Andrea's job, Andrea Moore, got that job. Her main function is really to connect the school with business. And within that, that would be internship programs, and job shadowing opportunities, and job fairs, and all kinds of things that go with that. So she's very busy, and I can't really imagine how we would be doing this thing without having her on the team. Another outcome, just in this last year, we launched the Tiger Path website, and we at the EDA were pretty involved in this. We helped with a lot of the development of the website, worked pretty closely with vivid image on it. So this really tells the story of Tiger Path and helps us promote it. And then also, we've been getting a heck of a lot of attention from other school districts, other communities. We get called pretty regularly, can you come and do a presentation on Tiger Path? And so these are just some of the ones that we've done recently. And then this past November, we had a skilled workforce conference here in Hutchinson. I think it was about 140 people came, and that was from all across Minnesota, so that was a real exciting event, and it's really impressive when you think about how many people want to figure, want to learn what we're doing here in Hutchinson, and they want to, they want to copy. And then results, a key result, you know, we're seeing, we're starting to see more and more now, young people, Hutchinson High School graduates get jobs here with local companies. So three, these three guys went to Alex Tech, but now they're all technicians over at 3M. MITGI has a bunch of people they've been able to hire, came from our high school. RD Machine got a guy coming their way from Hutchinson High School. So we're actually starting to see some real outcomes from this, and we think that as we push further into this, and as time goes by, we're going to see more and more Hutchinson people take the available jobs here in Hutchinson, which is exactly what we want. Other, other big things that we've worked on in the last year, and really, this is the culmination, this is like a three-year process to get this taken care of, but everybody's well aware of the intersection of Highway 7 and 15, the Cobblestone Inn Hotel, that opened in 2018, mid-2018, so that was very exciting to get that. That was much-needed additional hotel space in the community. The Hutchinson Enterprise Center, we're operating that, that's a 20,000-square-foot small-business incubator out in the industrial park, and that, basically, it's full. I mean, I only have, I think, 1,000 or 2,000 square feet left that I could possibly rent out, but we have three companies out there right now, and our idea is to bring in companies that are small, and we want to give them a lot of training and a lot of business education, and put them in a low-cost environment, and then hopefully, over the course of three or four years, they grow up, and then they're going to graduate out, and then we will repeat. So the companies that are all in there now, I think they're doing quite well, and at least so far, I think everything is kind of rolling out the way that we had hoped. So it's been successful here in the first year. We did recruit one company to town, Fire Lake Manufacturing, needed some space, and we were able to get them connected with some space out on, I can't think where it is.
Michigan.
Michigan Avenue, there you go.
25 Michigan.
Yes, there you go, you got it. So a small company, and they signed a two-year lease, and then I've had some conversations, they want to build their own building, so that could potentially become something more. This past year, we had, we were really fortunate to have the Japanese council general visit us here in Hutchinson. It's not very often that we get a high-level foreign dignitary visiting our community, but we got a phone call from the Minnesota Trade Office, and they asked us, well, how would you like to host the council general? And we said, sure, we surely would. And so that was very successful, and I know the council general was really impressed with what he saw here in Hutchinson. He had some comments that I put up on the board there that I thought were very interesting. So that's a relationship that we want to continue to cultivate, and also cultivate a relationship with the Trade Office, because we demonstrated for those guys that we can deliver the goods. And so hopefully, that's going to get us more visits in the future, and hopefully more interactions with, with the Japanese, Japanese companies and so forth, and we'll see, we'll see how it goes. And then a big chunk of what I do is writing grants, so this past year, we pulled in three grants. $150,000 came from 3M, and that went for that applied engineering classroom over at the high school. We got a $95,000 grant from the State of Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry, that was to help us fund the Tiger Path coordinator position and youth internships. And then we got a sizable grant from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, that was really just equipment for Upanor. So I think that's all I'm going to say about that. Current projects that we're working on, you know, I think, quite honestly, Tiger Path will probably be the number-one thing on my list here for years to come. It's just, that's just the way of the world, and I think, quite frankly, you know, the skilled workforce shortage as an issue, I mean, we're really on the front end of this. It's all going to get worse, because baby boomers are retiring, there's demographic changes going on, this is going to become a bigger issue, I think, every year for the next several years, and it will continue to be a major area of concern for businesses for a long time. So that's going to keep it really on our radar, and, yeah, I think that's my biggest thing for the foreseeable future. We're also working on another project, we're also working with Upanor and TDK to convert a, what's now a private driveway, but we want to turn that into a public street, so we're working on that. That hopefully will be a project here in the second half of the summer, and we're pursuing some grant funding from DED to help make that happen. And then also, we're talking with several different developers about projects that could happen on the clinic site down by the river, and then also on the Senex site across, on the north side of the Crow River. So we'll, we'll see where those go. There's one, there's three different developers we're talking with, so we'll see how that unfolds as time goes by.
On both those projects, or just one?
It could be one developer on one and a different developer across the river. So we'll, we'll see how that plays out. And then, yeah, there's a company X, there's always a company X, so that's, that, there's a company X I'm talking to that we're trying to get in Hutchinson, too, so we'll see. That's all I have for the report, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Obviously, Mayor and Council, too, there was a little bit more detailed report included in your, in your council packet as well, it's available, obviously, for you guys in the public, too.
So you mentioned Upanor, are they doing them? Are they still modifying and bringing stuff in?
Oh, yeah, yep, I mean, it's, it's, it's very busy up there, I'll say that. So Upanor is in production, last time I talked with them, I think they had 40 people that they were employing. They've, I think, more or less gotten done with their first, converting the first part of the building, and now they're in the process of converting another 90,000 square feet, which was two floors of, like, cubicle office space. So they're busy taking out that second floor and then removing columns, so they can convert that into high bay manufacturing space. So I think that's underway right now, and I think there's other things in the hopper that they have in their mind that will unfold here as time goes by. But I think they're very happy, and happy to be a part of Hutchinson, and obviously, we're thrilled to have them here.
Anybody ever talk, we've talked about the daycare subject, and I think Matt's going to, or with the community survey, or else have a survey, other areas to, when you talk to some of the businesses, does that come up as a way that, that might be discouraging?
Right.
Some people to be out in the workforce?
Yes, yep. And I do, when I go out and make my business retention visits, I have a survey form, and I actually have that as one of my questions that I try to be intentional about asking them. So at least so far, it really has not come up as a very prominent issue. I know as you go further west in Minnesota, it's a really big issue. So one of the things that we did do is we did do a census of local daycare providers, so I'll send you a copy of that, and it just outlines how many slots are available, and what's the demand, and all that stuff. So we, we are kind of looking into that, and obviously, that's an issue that we're going to pay close attention to, because, you know, for employers and employees, they need to have a spot for the youngsters, otherwise, you know, that would really hold us back, so we are keeping an eye on it.
I think the Tiger Path program is just an awesome program, you know, and definitely, excuse me, we are in the, you're in the forefront of it, which is really good for us. And I looked at that and thought, there's already three people who have successfully gone through that program and now are working within our community, you know? That is awesome.
And, you know, we hope here now, as time goes by, that we're just going to see more and more of that. So, you know, we're really super blessed here in that the Chamber of Commerce, they are totally on board with this, the school district's totally on board with it, Ridgewater College is on board with it, you know, we've got about two dozen other employers in town that are totally on board. You know, this is something that Council General Eto, he mentioned, you know, how do you get this level of collaboration? And I've talked with corporate site selectors, and, you know, that's a big deal to them, both skilled workforce development, I mean, they're, they're, they really like it that we have this high on our radar, because that's where it needs to be, but then also, they're really impressed with the level of collaboration that we have here in Hutchinson, so.
It really does take a village, doesn't it?
It does, yeah, it's all hands on deck, and it's all together now, and that's how we get things done.
Good.
So Miles, you talked, obviously, a lot about manufacturing, but that rather isn't just focused on manufacturing.
Nope, it's all, it's all employers regardless, and I think as you look at the need for workers, it, it's all the way across the whole spectrum. I mean, it's the medical field, it's the building trades field, it's manufacturing, and everything in between. You know, they talk about, at the high school, they say, well, if we're going to fill the teacher slots over here, we got to figure out which one in the class we're going to be recruiting, because how else are we going to get them? So fortunately, we have Tiger Path, and I think it's actually going to be very effective, but like you said, it's not just manufacturing by any stretch, it's the dentist, it's the veterinarian, it's every job, really.
Anything else for Miles?
Fantastic, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks to the board, too.
Next, discussion on Emerald Ashbore Program and increasing funding to the tree medication fund.
Mayor and Council, hand it over to Councilmember Cook, I guess.
Sure, you know, some of the other discussion, and looking again at some of the other high-density areas and some of the fund balances that we have. I was just wondering if the council would be willing to designate some other money into the tree fund to help starting to, you know, mix in some of the trees in those high-density areas. I mentioned once, I was thinking maybe 200,000 out of that surplus from last year, but that was more for a two-year program, thinking that maybe there'd be other funding later on available, especially with some of the things being discussed, you know, at Creekside, but maybe, you know, just this year, we could set aside some, and then target some of those areas, and then next year, we could try to do some more. But heard that Emerald Ashbore now is found up in Sauk Center. It's kind of taken a leap along the 94 corridor, it looks like, and even the I-90 corridor, there are some, but there's a place up near Orano, too, that, or Delano, I mean, that reached there, so, again, it's just a way to mix in and increase diversity, trying to get a mix now in some of these high-density areas that we have in town, so that when the Emerald Ashbore actually gets here, we've already got some other trees already established, and hopefully, it's not here for 10, 10 years or more, so they get a pretty good start on it.
I guess, Mayor and Council, just to add to the conversation, at the end of 2018... I guess Mayor and Council, just to add to the, the conversation, at the end of 2018, our, our current, um, disease, Tree Disease Mitigation Fund had a, had a fund balance around $446,000. We, you know, contribute $55,000 a year to that fund. Um, and then there's, I think our policy talks about up to $40,000 to be spent for some of the mitigation, you know, efforts. So, you know, depending on what you spend in, you know, a given year, you're, you're adding some to that fund balance as well.
But we know it's going to cost a lot more when it does get here.
I think we, I think what, whatever, you know, I think we calculate somewhere around 1.5 million if. Disaster type of.
So again, let's just do more now, spread it out a little bit and then also have some beneficial effect. Already in place.
I think when our fund is pretty decent now, so I think, uh, when it does come, we can react instead of, uh, instead of moving it now, I'd, I'd say we just, we have enough in it. Personally, I think we have enough in it and, um, unless our, you know, forester comes and says that we got to do something, I, it's kind of comfortable what we have in there now.
It's right now where the target is 40 trees a year.
Yeah.
Can we do more than that?
Well, could we bring Donovan in to talk to him about it? Do you think, Kent, have you talked to him much about this program or?
Yeah, and John and I have. And I don't know if it's so much, uh, it's more of a policy decision than it is purely an arborist decision, you know? And, you know, and that's the struggle here, you know, Donovan's an arborist, you know? He's not a forester or driving the policy. I mean, and I, we would look for guidance from council more than anything. I mean, this is, and John and I have talked plenty about this, this is very, it's, it's what the community wants to do or you want to do as policymakers, honestly. We don't know when the bug's showing up. We don't know what the magic number of trees is, you know? And I think Steve has some good points and, and looking forward, but we struggle with balancing the fund and, you know, and with respect to the reserve fund, yeah, I mean, you as policymakers have to make that decision if you want to take this out. I don't know what Donovan will communicate to you.
Sure.
Will inform you to make that decision, I guess.
Couple of things to, and Kent's right, I mean, it, if the council's desire to expand on that replacement, that's, that's the policy aspect, that's in front of you guys for consideration. You know, a couple of other things, and this is really, uh, falls back on your guys' shoulders as policymakers. You know, we've got roughly 55% in our general fund. Um, you've got another, like I said, $446,000 in the, in, um, the Tree Disease Mitigation Fund. You've got undesignated balances in the capital projects and the Community Improvement Fund. Um, so there's money out there. Now, there are benefits to designating funds. I mean, it's, once again, that comes down to the comfort the council wants to be at. In any one of those funds, I should say.
And that's why I didn't want to deplete the existing funds in the Tree Mitigation Fund, knowing that we're going to need that at some point in the future. But, you know, so to maintain that cushion, but still recognizing there's some other dollars available and that again, there's a benefit of trying to do more now to get some other trees reestablished before we start having to cut, you know, things down when we don't have a choice. Just seem like here's an opportunity to do something.
What was that dollar amount, Steve?
What's it?
Did you have a dollar amount in mind?
I was thinking a hundred thousand dollars for this year and maybe next year we look at doing something else. But, uh, right now we're saying 40 trees for about $40,000. Now, I know it's probably going to be different if we have to hire somebody to do some, but, um, there's a lot of areas where there's very high concentrations. Like I said, I was right in today and, you know, a lot of these areas, it's not just one ash tree, it's two, three, four ash trees. And so, um, that's all they have. So why not thin them out, start planting something else in their place now? That's all.
So you're technically saying if they have like four on their property? And they're all on the boulevard, maybe we take down two and plant in two trees? Right? I mean, that's pretty basic.
Yeah. Something, yeah, I would.
If I may please.
Leave that to staff.
Yeah, and that's, you're probably posing the question.
Right.
To Donovan and John and myself is if there was a hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis, you know, how could that be utilized? How would that be administered?
And could we?
Number of trees, where, how, you know, contractors, et cetera. You know, and that question can be answered by staff. Not so much determining the amount or the investment.
Right, but you, your staff would be able to decipher which trees should come down and be replanted.
I think we wouldn't go tree by tree, but we would propose an approach.
Right.
On how that investment could be administered.
But that could be again targeted for these high density areas, which is different than what we're doing now, where we're looking for more diseased trees and things like that, right? So, but that would work from the staff standpoint if we kind of gave that as a.
I think a hundred thousand helps us a bit when it comes to that standpoint.
Yeah, and that's a tough, like what that investment should be. But I think if you frame up the amount of the invest, investment, over what timeframe, staff can then digest what can be delivered and how. Go ahead, John.
Um, just kind of real rough numbers. Basically, standing out there today, there's about a million dollars worth of replacements once, once the critter shows up. Cause we have learned what to expect as far as mortality. And typically within a 15-year period, they're all gone. And so you usually lose about 10% in the first five years, 20% in the succeeding five year, uh, five years, and then 70% in the last five years of that 15-year period. So, um.
So John, you're saying from like the day the board gets here?
Yeah, you usually, about 15 years before they're all, all gone. And, um, you know, it depends. There's areas where it's, that, that's very broad general, uh, generalization of what we've seen for data. So if you think of it in rough terms, it's going to be roughly about a million dollars to cut everything down and about half a million dollars to plant, something different. Um, taking where we are today, um, you know, that gives us roughly about, uh, um, you know, a need of, of about $76,000 a year for the next 15 years. We're at 55, so you, you know, you got 20-some left. You look at a hundred thousand and split it out over 15 years, you know, that gives you $6,700 or somewhere in there, 66, 67, I guess, doing the math.
That's too much math, Mike.
I usually don't like doing math after four o'clock, but, uh, but, but that being said, I mean, it is, so, so that would definitely pin us, you know, closer to the goal, I think of, of, um, and then it becomes a question of whether that would be, uh, you know, were that 100,000 to be designated for this particular purpose, you know, then we could put a project together and give you, um, probably in the neighborhood of 120 trees for that amount of money. Um, take them out and replace them roughly. So we're figuring right in this 750 to $800 mark to do a removal and replacement, so.
Is that a, doing it in-house or hiring somebody to do that?
I would, um, just by the work volume and, and what we have going on already, I would probably look to do a, a project using.
I agree with my recommendation.
A contractor, yeah. Yeah, cause I, I, just, just to oversee that type of a contract would be pretty significant effort.
Are there contractors available for this type of work?
Yes.
I just know like privately, it's hard to find somebody like trim trees and, you know, like, and that's a whole different deal.
It is, um, it, it, it's not easy, let's put it that way. Um, it's not easy to find them, but yes, you can find them.
I think if you've got a.
A project like that.
Project.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna get a few knocks on the door just by the volume of that type of a project, so.
So John, when you take a diseased one down.
Yeah.
What do you do? Do you like take it out to Andy and he chips it up right away or?
Yep, mm-hmm, yeah.
So they destroy?
Yeah, at this point, of course, we don't have any that are that way. Uh, we have ones that are in poor health that we take down and have taken down over the last several years. Um, there's some that are in areas that, you know, are being changed like a park or something like that. There's some plans in place. Um, you know, those kinds of removals at, up to this point haven't been, um, necessarily, uh, any diseased or infested tree. They've been trees that it either made sense for them to go or, um, there were some other plans and things like that. Um, but, you know, I, I guess the biggest thing would be to, um, understand what it is that, that particular funding, what the goal of it is. Um, and if that were defined for us, uh, by the council, that would be extraordinarily helpful because then we can start to do what we need to do to make the best use of those funds.
So if I, if we, uh, directed it towards, uh, replacing trees in high density ash areas, is that good enough?
Yes.
Of direction?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, because we know where they are.
Yeah.
And we know roughly the amount of trees. And, um, then we can start focusing in on particular trees probably even. Um, very well could be that we put, take three out and put two back. You know, depending on where things are, are located and, and, you know, there might be areas like that. Um, not in general, of course, but in specific areas, so.
So there's kind of, as we continue the discussion, there's in my mind, there's two ways to look at that. Uh, one would be, okay, our, this is council, our plan would be to give you guys a hundred thousand dollars, please come back with a project and then.
Mm-hmm.
That project's presented, you guys can authorize that or you can authorize the money now. And obviously they come back at that point too.
Mm-hmm, we'd have to come back anyway, you know, more than likely it'd be over the magic number and you'd be seeing it as a purchase order more than likely, so.
So John, for high density, like say you take a block, how many, how many ash trees are in that high density area?
When, uh, we've got some areas that are 35% plus, um, is kind of one category that we have. They, they can be as high as 60% in small areas within that. So I, um, you know, our first projects kind of focused in on the northeast side of town and then the area around the rec center area. Um, and, and those are, have historic neighborhoods, you know, in that 40 to 50-year-old range that have a lot of ash trees in them. Cause they would have been coming up and being developed about the time that the Dutch Elm was a big deal. So they got a lot of green ash trees at that time. You know, houses built in the, I want to say, early to mid seventies, starting in there and going, uh, maybe even a little earlier, you know, before that, so.
There's other areas too, like Sherwood.
Sherwood, there's several areas, um.
But still kind of that same age.
Right, correct, yeah. 40 to 50-year-old developments now are the ones that, that we would more than likely end up focusing on just based on what the map's telling us in the inventory, so. Um, that's certainly, you know, the other look at it is, you know, we're, we're, we're almost there. We're like 15 short, if you do the math, um, of what the need is over the long haul. So if, if in a, you know, and we could back calculate that, um, to, if, so if there is an opportunity in the future years to do something similar, um, you know, then, then we'd be able to keep a, keep a running tab on what that, what that, uh, will run, you know? Cause it's already dropped close to, uh, uh, well, we've, we're down several, because I think we had about 2150 and we're down just a hair over 2,000 now, so. So, you know, we've made progress in that area.
I guess my idea was just to try to accelerate it a little bit more by, you know, designating some more money to it, so.
And if you want to do that, we'd be happy to put a project together is, um, and that can be done.
Yeah, I would.
So I guess that's the question from the council, is that, I mean, would you prefer that they put a plan together and then you guys? Is that funding? I mean, we don't have any action tonight either which way, but, and so that's kind of, I guess, the direction that I'm looking for staff.
I think that'd be, I think that'd be the direction I'd like to see.
I would too.
Have, have them put a plan together and.
With that hundred thousand dollar?
Yes.
See if that, if that, if that's the number they need.
We'll, we'll do it.
It's not so much what you need, it's, I mean.
Tell me what you got.
You could use, uh, five hundred thousand, right?
If you gave them a million, we'd figure it out.
Take that.
This would be a great pilot, you know, project too, like if, you know, see where it goes and then, um, maybe next year there's another one. And go from there.
We'll, we'll assume that hundred thousand dollar number and we'll proceed and come back to you through the PO process with a project.
That's great.
So is this a project that can be, uh, started and ended this, this calendar year?
I do believe we could pull it off this year, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty size, it's, it's sizable, but it's not gigantic, undoable.
Yeah, we're not too late in the year already.
I don't believe we are, no. Cause we could plant into the fall, so.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion on request for proposal for city marketing and branding.
Um, Mayor and Council, I include in your council packet, kind of, I guess, what I would call would be the first draft of a potential RFP. You may recall that back in January, there was a, a discussion on, um, creating some sort of a marketing plan, um, for the city. And some of that I would say plays off a little bit about what, um, Miles talked about. Obviously they're focusing more on in-house, if you want to say recruitment with our local school district. I think that when this was originally brought up, the thought would be an effort to recruit, uh, young families, um, and other individuals outside of the community, um, into the community. And so I put together, uh, I would call it, I mean, at least the first draft, a pretty broad approach. I'm not completely sure all the areas that you guys wanted to, to look at. Um, but I did put together an RFP for your consideration. And within that RFP, I did identify what I would consider to be three main goals. If we were to pursue this project, and that would be the update of the city logo. And I know that's, you know, quite frankly, that's minimal. Um, I've heard some comments about how the citizens want to spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. It would probably be a couple hundred dollars. I wouldn't go through a, an all-out replacement of a logo, we'd do it over time as it. But one of the things that we don't have is that we've got a, a logo that's 25, 30 years old. It's just, it's not up to date for, you know, the digital world that we live in. Um, and so that's the biggest reason on line to why, to look at an update of that logo. Um, the second goal would be to do a, a community branding initiative. And the third would be a, a marketing campaign that uses various outlets. And so that was, that's really the, if you want to say the goal of this RFP, or at least that's what I put together. Um, but I at least wanted to put it in front of the council to, to get some feedback. Am I on the right track? Am I missing something? Once again, the RFP doesn't commit us to anything. What it does, it helps, helps us to paint a picture on what it would cost us if this was a route we wanted to pursue.
Have you touched base with like Miles and, I mean, he's doing his site selectors and talked about that. And, and then the chamber is doing stuff with recruiting visitors. recruiting visitors through the visitor convention.
Yeah. You know, the, I think there's some interest depending on what.
And I'm not even saying to participate, but just so we're not.
Yeah, I don't think there's anybody doing a comprehensive look like this in the community right now, you know, as, and I think they've got more directive focus in areas, so. Some of it might be overlapping, but I would say there's nothing out there right now this comprehensive going on in the community.
I guess when I brought it up earlier, it was really to try to, you know, market to younger families. I think single people, they might want to be in the metro area and everything that that happens, but you hear of young families that come back and appreciate Hutchinson and the quality of life and, and good jobs and, but parks, but, and also the proximity to the Twin Cities, you know, so you can still go in and take part in some of those things, so. So that's the only thing that I saw in it that I'd like to see a little more focused on, you know, say residents. We have more seniors coming in just with some of the housing that's available, but we, especially if we're trying to market, you know, if it could be targeted a little bit more specifically to, or a component of it, to young families, I think. Be curious to see what they'd come up with.
Yeah, I mean, I think our city logo needs to get updated because obviously it's a little old-fashioned, but I don't know if, like, what do you envision, Steve, like these companies coming back with like a big, like, Facebook or print campaign or?
Well, again, with the, that target audience, you know, I would think it would be more social media possibly, and, but I don't know. You know, there's, you see other ones that have been out there. I sent, found an article just over the weekend about, again, targeting cities trying to lure young families, so. It helps your schools, it helps the businesses, it helps jobs, you know, the workforce thing, so. So I think as far as how you do it, that's what the RFP would provide, right?
Correct.
Ideas on that. We just have to tell them kind of what we're looking for, right, at this point.
Because RFP will give you options on what the potential company thinks they can do and what that would look like, and then also give an idea of what they cost the city as well. You know, the RFP doesn't cost us anything. I will say, companies do invest time in it. So it doesn't ever look good if if they feel like you've wasted their time, but we also have no clue what something like this would
Right, that's the other.
Would cost us. And that's the only way you're really going to find out.
I don't think anything's hurt by sending out the RFP, but I also don't see families just moving out based on an ad or something. I think people move due to like an economic reason or like a family connection or a friend connection or.
A job.
A job, yeah. I mean, like looking at my friends that have moved to town, none of them just moved here on a whim, you know, they all moved here because they needed a job and there was a job here. You know, or they had a family connection, you know, I have a lot of friends that have moved here because their brother moved here and they liked it, so then they moved here too because they experienced it, but none of them, it was just a, you know, bold move to uproot and move somewhere. So I don't know how, like a social media, how effective that would be, but.
Of course, on the other end of the spectrum too is, you know, if you targeted the, you know, senior citizen population where, you know, you can always, you know, tell them the, all the amenities that we have for senior citizens here too, you know. And it's, I guess it works both ways. I mean, it's the younger end, you know, you have to get the younger and the older.
And then, and the middle too.
Right.
You know, you're targeting all the age groups.
I think some of it too is, you know, with the RFP is give your experience and what have been some of the results, you know, that you've been able to, to do.
Okay. Like I said, I make a couple changes and we'll look at, here in the near future, looking to actually send something out.
All right, second reading and adoption of ordinance number nineteen dash seven ninety-eight, ordinance relating smoking in city parks.
Mayor and council, you guys had, after a minor change at the last council meeting, you did consider a first reading of, of this ordinance, ordinance nineteen seven nine eight. There have been no changes to the ordinance since its first reading that was conducted at your last meeting. We're looking for, comfortable with it, I guess, option of the, approval of the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
I did have somebody approach me about the ball field areas at Roberts Park. I know they had a, he kind of said that if they don't let them smoke at Roberts Park. Now, I see that it says the ball field area, so does that, does this mean the the actual ball field? Or, because it does say spectator area, you know, down lower and stuff too, so.
It would include the spectator areas, concession stands and restrooms at those facilities. I mean, you would have to be twenty-five feet away from those.
Which I think is fine.
That's fine, twenty-five feet away.
Yeah. He just approached me, so I said I'd bring it up, so.
But he wanted to smoke by the ball fields or what did he want to do?
Well, I guess that they, I don't know if, if they, you know, there's walkways in between the ball fields. So, I don't know, I'm just.
Sure. I would say you wouldn't be able to smoke there based on the language here.
Yeah, right.
And I think that's all okay.
Kind of just within the complex itself, basically, so I could leave, you know, go outside the fence area, the parking lots.
Parking lot.
Ecology site.
Yeah. Dolphins picking up cigarettes butts there, so. I mean, I just, you know, he approached me and I told him that I would just bring it up for clarification.
I mean, the, the summary of the ordinance says that we're not going to allow smoking or vaping within twenty-five feet of a playground, within twenty-five feet of spectator areas, within twenty-five feet of concession stands and restrooms. Except we are allowing smokeless tobacco for those that are.
Help clear that up, you know, would there be possibilities maybe with ship for some signage that could be kind of on the entrances?
I mean, when we had the signage up in the past, people didn't smoke inside the ballpark, they went out in the parking lot.
There you go.
And how did that system work?
There was compliance and it wasn't even an ordinance.
Perfect.
It was a sign, it was on a fence.
So I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, Carrie. New business issuing massage license to Kylie Krugel at one forty Main Street South.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you indicated, we received an application from Kylie Krugel, who is going to be doing business as Much Needed Massage LLC. She wants to provide massage services at the Robert Michael Salon on Main Street. As noted in your packet, Hutchinson Police Services has conducted an investigation. There's nothing in her background that would be a reason to deny her license application according to Chief Hatton. And as you probably are also seeing, she's provided the adequate insurance that we require and based on all those things, the police department and I guess the city administration would be recommending that you approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks. The establishment of planning, building, EDA technical position and approved resolution number one five zero two zero to amend the two thousand nineteen contrahenched plan to reflect the change in the position classification table.
Mayor and council, this is a request in front of you tonight for consideration of adding another full-time employee. This would be at thirty-two hours. Some of that, I guess, costs and expense would be offset. We would be eliminating two part-time slash seasonal positions. Currently, we've got an individual who works in both our EDA and our planning zoning department, provides assistance to him in that part-time seasonal realm, that's what we're looking to. We feel that it's a valuable individual who could provide benefit to the community, or to the city, I should say. And we'd like you, for your consideration, adding that position.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the resolution and position. Any other discussion?
So the funds, as far as where they're coming from?
It'd be split between the EDA and the general fund, which is a planning and zoning. Right now, it would be thirty-eight percent goes into the EDA with the remaining being paid for by planning and zoning department.
This is thirty-two hours.
Thirty-two hours.
Who would go full-time and serve and talk?
There's been some talk and I've shared at least with staff, that at this point that would have to come from the EDA finances, which I don't think they're, they have that available to them at this point. Before it would be considered anyways, so. At this time, it's, it'd be thirty-two hours. We've got roughly four or five other positions that are like that here at the city that are full-time, under the forty hours. So our policy is anything thirty hours and above is considered full-time.
Been mentioned where really synergy between the workloads really fits well too.
Yeah, you know, we've, you know, we've budgeted the last couple of years between the, this is, this would eliminate the EDA intern position and then has already been about seventeen hundred hours between those two positions, and that's really what this position's going to fill. Obviously, it's at a a full-time wage with, with benefits, but as I know it, we feel that individuals talented and could be an asset to the, to, to the city.
She does a great job at EDA, so.
And I also think it's been hard for, to find interns to fill this position, and then they're there for such a short time, and then they're gone, and then you're starting all over and retraining and relearning someone. This is just a better win-win for all of us.
Chad and Mary, you guys are on the EDA, you guys have.
Well, at one time, Miles had a connection with the EDA or the Economic Development Program at St. Cloud, and we were getting really good interns and then that.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe.
I don't know. Not all of them are good. Through the years, there have been some gems, you know, of course, so.
Come on now, I can go get my referees.
Yeah, there's, there's been some decent ones, but, but that being said, the one who's doing it now is one of the best we've had, in my opinion, so.
Well, and just one of the most important things, I guess, I see from my office anyway, is just all the loan programs that the EDA administers. And it'll be so nice to have continuity with a single person throughout the years. So they're aware of the programs that are out there and who has what loans and what status they are and things of that nature, so.
Well, if you find somebody that does a good job, you got to hang on to them.
Right. This person does.
Good.
Thank you.
Call a motion, all in favor? Close, Carrie. Maybe we should do this airport hanger, uh-oh. Compost Turner acquisition. Mr. Andy, how are you?
I'm good, how are you, Mayor?
Good.
Good evening, rest of the council. As indicated in the packet information tonight, Creekside's compost fund has budgeted to replace its compost Turner here in two thousand nineteen. Through the public, public bid process, three bids were received, two eligible, one ineligible. And I'll get to why it wasn't eligible here in a second, but the two bids received, the two eligible bids received were both from Henning Equipment. Both bids were on a Comtech Top Turn X fifty-five machine.
Oh.
You all know what that is, right, right? Okay. One of the, one of the bids was for a new two thousand nineteen machine, and it came in with a net sale price after trade of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars, whereas the second bid from Henning Equipment was for a two thousand seventeen demo unit with approximately ninety-five hours on it, and that came in with a net sale price after trade of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Just shy of fifty thousand dollars less, obviously, than, than the new machine. The third bid, the ineligible bid, came from Ardio Equipment, and that was on a Vermeer CT seven eighteen. The reason that it was ineligible was how the bid was submitted. In the instructions, the bidding instructions, it clearly stated that the bids needed to be delivered in a sealed envelope. They emailed theirs over the day of, so on those grounds, we deemed it ineligible. And furthermore, that machine didn't meet all the specs, so it kind of certainly made the decision a little easier. Just to talk about the machines a little bit, as seen in the, shown in the photos that I included in the packet, the SCAT Turner, and that's not a nickname, that's the actual brand of the machine that we currently have, is basically no longer being manufactured. Vermeer actually bought that machine, or bought that company out and started to produce the Vermeer brand of that style, but in the recent years actually discontinued manufacturing them. So that essentially forced us to look at different styles, different cooperational concepts, and going to the straddle type that these Comtech Turners are. One of the things that I believe, you know, Vermeer discontinued the machine is just looking at maintenance and repair expenses, that our machine was very maintenance prone. I wouldn't necessarily say repair, but just very, very expensive to operate over the course of the fourteen years that we owned it, fifty-two hundred hours were put on it. I don't have the exact numbers, but about every four to five years, we were budgeting forty to fifty thousand dollars in parts to just repair the machine to bring it back to a more of an operable state. And that are just, that's just a parts cost, that doesn't include any labor as we did it all internally, so. It's probably good written that they're no longer available. Some of the operational changes that we'll have to see, that we will see or experience with the, with the new machine is right now, with our current style, we're able to build blocks or cells of compost, it was one big pile, it could be a hundred feet wide, two hundred feet wide, or two hundred feet long, just a big square. Where now the new machine, we have to actually build windrows, and the windrow size that this machine would be able to withstand is sixteen and a half feet wide, seven feet tall. So it's going to be a little bit of a transition for us this year because our, our yard is set up for the big block, we're going to have to tear that down and, you know, assume some, could absorb some, some loader time, but once we get to that point, I think the, the processing with this new machine will be very, very beneficial for us just in terms of the compost process in and of itself and shedding moisture, additional extra moisture. I don't know if anybody noted or pointed out or seen the, the trade value on our current machine, again, kind of going back to this machine being discontinued, it's currently inoperable. Right before bids went out, we experienced a rather major breakdown with it. Didn't stick any money into it. Both dealers knew about it, were very well aware, and again, being that this machine's discontinued, there isn't an end market for it, so if they were to stick the money into it, they definitely would not be getting it back out, so the fourteen hundred dollars coming from Henning is essentially scrap price. Which I don't disagree with. I mean, there's, there's certainly, you could part it out and maybe capitalize on a little better return, but, you know, I think it's just, let it go. Let it, let it be put to bed. So, that all being said, staff's recommendation to purchase the two thousand seventeen machine as we feel that there's no significant changes or difference from the demo unit to the. that there's no significant changes or difference from the demo unit to the new machine, and ultimately saving $50,000 on the purchase price. And upon approval, we would be, we would intend to finance the machine on a seven, a seven-year loan. Andy Reed solicited several banks and received a handful of quotations back with, with a very appealing 2.99% interest rate coming back on, on Commerce Bank, I believe it was, like I mentioned in there. We did budget 3.5% as a budgetary assumption for 2019, so pleasant to see that come in a little more.
So it's available, ready to go? It's available?
The machine, the machine, we, we demoed this machine last spring, this exact, this 2017 unit, is based out of Chaska. There's not a lot of these machines in the country, they're built in Austria, I believe, so this machine is sitting in Florida right now on a, on another demo. They, they demoed it already, and they're basically waiting on word from us if we're going to take it. They'll ship it back up here and, and go through it, so they had 45 days on, on the delivery, which they feel they'll easily beat, but essentially within a month, we would see it.
So is that pretty much the method now, the preferred methods, the windrow? We used to do that, then we went to these cells?
Yeah, and I think the, the, one of the bigger reasons we went to this style, the Turner that we're getting rid of, is, is because of our footprint, the real estate. This is back when we had Minneapolis material, and a heck of a lot more material coming to Hutch than there is now, so real estate was, was valuable. And with that style, we were able to pile more material in a smaller space to where now we have the room and we can transition back to the windrows. But yes, you're right, we did do windrows way back in the day. That machine had some issues and was ultimately replaced with the SCAT, but, but yeah.
The new one looks like it's a little more operator-friendly, too.
Yeah, there's a few creature features with it. I mentioned to Steve, it's not necessary, but it's a, it's an operator safety aspect or feature, but where the cab actually lowers down to the ground, hydraulically lowers down to the ground, so the operator doesn't have to climb up on the machine to enter the cab. They're the only manufacturer that produces a, I shouldn't say that, there is another one that has a little, little different design, but it's a, we've, there's a, there is a couple of those machines of, not this particular size, but of this brand in the state at other composting facilities, and every single one of them has all but good, has every, is all good. Good reports, good reviews, so we feel definitely comfortable with it.
I can see that most of the glass is kind of away from the moving parts.
Yeah.
Not like the old one.
Yeah. Yep.
I was out a few times to help Andy out.
Placing glass.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when the machine's operating, you're actually up on top of the tunnel where that drum is under, kind of back underneath you, so there's, there's no chance of flying debris hitting the cab unless it ricochets off of something, but.
Good financing-wise, we, we actually budgeted for.
Yep, we, I think it's a little bit more than what we had budgeted.
We were anticipating $450,000 purchase price, and it obviously came in.
So, I mean, we'll have, have some adjustments in the future years, but yes, it was, we had budgeted for, for the debt payment in 2019.
And there is cash reserves there to pay for this in full, but if you remember, next year's capital has a, has a screening planned coming up, and I think, I think Andy's intent is to pay that in cash, because it's a little lower dollar amount and finance this larger dollar amount.
Yep, and obviously, this is all being paid for by operation.
Right.
Operations at Creekside, so.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carried. City Airport Hangar Agreement Document. Mr. Olson?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this would be the rental agreement that's put together with our tenants out there, and in, there were some modifications made, the biggest, you know, just kind of tidying up some language and, and to make it a little bit more clear, hopefully, of what the expectations are from each of the parties. There was one, I received an email from Steve about some of the questions he had, and definitely I would like to add that language, you know, relative to improvements, alterations, additions made by either party. I think if we added that phrase, "made by either party," that would take care of that.
What's, I can't remember.
What's that section?
It's section 2.10 in the, in the work, in the messy one. I think 2.6 in the other one, so.
Yeah, that's just saying, if somebody makes an improvement, it's city property.
It's city property.
No matter who makes it.
Yeah, whether it's us or whether it's the tenant, if there's any alterations or addition or modifications to the hangar, it's.
Stays here.
It stays there, in essence.
John, was, I know when, at, when we had our meeting, were you going to add something with the insurance on it or not, or?
The insurance section is pretty well laid out for what the tenant needs to do. Basically, they need to have premises insurance on their aircraft, which is almost, I, I don't, I've only seen one or two ever policies that did not include that, and it's a, it's a coverage that covers the premises where the aircraft is stored. So it follows the airplane wherever it is hangered or tied down or in whatever way stored, you know, it follows the aircraft. So that coverage is required of a tenant. There was a question about whether we should talk about our insurance coverage, and I, my thought process behind that is that, you know, that's not necessary for the relationship between us, that's more of a business decision that we make as being prudent stewards of that asset, we take, we do what we need to, to cover it. And obviously, we do have coverage on, on our aircraft hangars, similar to, you know, what you would have on your house, fire insurance type of a product. And then a couple of the questions related to the appendices that are on, and the main question being some chemicals. Basically, the appendices are lifted directly out of FAA language. The intent of the appendices is to make clear to a tenant what is allowable as maintenance activities versus what is a commercial activity that would need to be done by a licensed mechanic. There's some pretty wide leeway, if you are the owner-operator of an aircraft, that you are allowed to do certain things, and this is, like I said, gone all the way up through FAA and is actually one of the assurances that we sign on to every time we do a project that says we're going to abide by what FAA says that a tenant can do. In the past, there were areas of the country where airports would not allow anybody to do anything to their, their own airplane, and made everybody go pay the local FBO, and that, this is in reaction to that, where they, pretty clearly, I think, sat down and said, these are things that owner-operators can do to their own aircraft. So that, that's the, that was the, kind of the idea behind the appendices, is to pick that language up out of FAA, so.
You mentioned the insurance, Gary, in the meeting, was that a airport?
Well, those, yeah, Airport Commission just talked about maybe having them put their policy number and.
Yes.
And their insurance company and policy number.
In the information that we gather about the tenant, that, that certainly can be done, and for the most part, that doesn't.
Under Section 1.
Right. We can do that right under Section 1.
Yeah.
And then we could, you know, get some sort of contact to the information for their company. More often than not, most people have us already set up as, you know, we receive certificates of insurance automatically, so we know when there's changes or renewals and things like that, so. But that, that would be another way of collecting that, certainly can be added.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Make a motion to approve, with those changes, including that one on the improvements and.
And then the insurance.
Yeah.
Very good.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carried.
All right, thanks, everybody, for your comments, I appreciate those, so.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Governance, we have the Public Library Board minutes from February 25, 2019, Hutch Utilities Commission minutes from February 27, 2019, sidewalks, no removal report, January through March, 2019, and Liquor Hutch Quarterly Report. Dolph, you have anything for us tonight?
No.
John, one question for you. Somebody asked me, of course, didn't know it was going to snow so quick again, but Sweeper, I heard that we're getting a new one?
Yes.
We're waiting for it, or?
Yes, we, if you recall, in this, this last fall and winter, we approved the acquisition of a Sweeper, and the Sweeper is in the dealership right now, so the final upfitting is being done. We expect that Sweeper to show up probably in the next few days. The weather that we're looking at might put a little bit of a dampers on that, but our, our expectation is late this week or early next, at the latest, and we're itching to go and are ready to go with spring sweeping at that point. You know, knowing that April can be, I, I don't close the book on winter until May, ever, just because, you know, it, it always happens that we have these snows that we have to hurry up and plow before they melt, and, and, you know, so typically, looking back, our start times for spring sweeping have ranged from mid-March to early April over the last several years, and last year was a little bit later than normal, of course. But generally, it takes us about three weeks to go through the city for the spring sweeping, and we consider spring sweeping, every road is swept from curb to curb one time, and then we switch over and do our normal seasonal sweeping after that point. So be a one-staffed person dedicated, and oftentimes two, because we'll dump into a dump truck right off the bat and process as much as we can in a short period of time, so. The other thing is, you may well note, there is the stairs going up to the sidewalk on School Road. This, this is behind Tokyo Grill. There's a ramp up for the trail that goes down and connects with the loose line, and then there's a set of steps that go up the, the side hill to a sidewalk. We had a water main break there, and we had to remove the stairs, and we also had to remove the retaining wall, so we have the area marked out, you can still use the trail, not a problem. You can use the side trail going up to Tokyo Grill, although it's narrowed in some places because of some storage of, of different materials, but just to be careful down there. But we did find the leak today, took care of it. When we dry out a little bit, we'll be in there to remove the remainder of the stairs, we'll remove the sidewalk, and we'll touch up that, that area between the trail and the ramp that goes up to the, the upper portion of the road, so just be aware of that, so. All right.
And if, if the public can, the people that adopted, catch base and make sure it's clean, so.
Yes.
With the heavy snow, and I know that with the water rushing, there's a few of them that got debris in them, so if the.
Always check those, yeah. Appreciate everything. Yeah, so.
All right, thanks, John. Andy, you got anything else?
Just our busy spring season is strong here. Couple weeks ago, loads are flying out from the site pretty quickly. We started bagging two shifts, 16 hours a day, last Monday. We'll see that happening for the next couple, probably closer pushing to Memorial Weekend. So with that being said, the, the site's busy. We've got forklifts running, all brisket loaders, loaders, trucks in and out of there. With the nice weather we had earlier this week, residential traffic started to pick up, so just a common courtesy on both parts, just to keep an eye out for each other. Our, our operators don't have the best visibility in some of the equipment, so as residents come out, just to be aware.
So that's the, when you talk about, like, the brush area and stuff, when I drove by there, and this was several months ago, but it seemed pretty full, and, yeah, so.
They're actually back grinding today, just to open up some room, but we tried to save, save our pile towards the bitter last, is just what we've done, and no really regular reason, we just ended up using, grinding ours last. So here in the next couple weeks, the whole pile will be wiped out, and a lot of it is just to get through the spring thaw, so it's not such a frozen mess underneath.
Sure.
Because if you start doing this with a pad, and the pad's in tough enough shape the way it is, we don't want to make it any worse, so.
All right. Thanks, Andy. Count?
Just one thing I'm noting, you might have saw it in your, your consent agenda items in the packet, we did have our Fifth Avenue South bid the other day, and fortunate to get four bidders, and the bottom three were within about 2.5% of each other, so very competitive. Looks like we got a real number, there's no doubt in that, and it was a little bit under our, about 7% less than our final engineer's estimate, so. Off to a good start, and we'll start plugging in numbers, costs and funding, and looking at how the overall program's going to start to take shape here, but this was a good result in comparison to what we had been hearing in the region with respect to bids let by other cities and counties at this point, so we're, we're happy with what we saw the other day. That's it.
Mr. Sabora?
I don't have anything else tonight.
Chief Berth, that was really quick. You know, that's what happens when you get old, you gotta put your glasses on.
Steve, good to start with you. Okay, just two things. One, just to follow up, you know, with the marketing thing and, you know, about trying to attract people, but, yeah, we got the jobs, too, and that's part of it, and where we're competing with other communities who have jobs also, just like Miles showed, so as far as trying to stress that, plus the quality of life and everything else, but. The only other thing I had was, I did attend the Highway 212 project in Chaska on Friday, and Commissioner Kelleher was there, as well as the Met Council Chair, so it was good. Really, Carver County's done a ton of work, you know, on the project, and a lot of good information, and it wouldn't have been going anywhere without what they've done, plus their sales tax money that, you know, they earmark for that, and, but I think they understood, it was a good turnout as well, just real diverse group of people, elected officials, the mayor from Granite Falls and Olivia were there, and some others, trucking company people, and, so I think, you know, it just stressed the variety of needs from trucking to safety and commuting and things like that, so hopefully, there'll be some good word, it sounded like Chaska, or Carver County's going to start with. It sounded like Chaska or Carver County's gonna start with property acquisition and stuff for that first phase coming up, so as far as total funding, there's still, what, six million dollars short or?
Five, six million, yeah.
But there's hope that MNDOT will come up with that. They did talk about the fly-in to Washington and there's really this infrastructure for rebuilding America grant that we had this resolution of support for that whole timeframe, you know, and those awards, it's gonna be about the same time as the fly-in, so they really encourage people to attend that, just like we talked about with the joint meeting with this county board. Both John Brunkhorst and Joe Nagel said it'd be great if somebody from the city could go and be willing to do that if the council, you know, would okay that or somebody else wants to, but I think just having somebody represent the city and you go as part of a group. Transportation Alliance really makes all the arrangements, but just strengthen numbers, but that's it.
Thanks, Steve. Chad?
I don't have anything extra.
Mary?
Um, I have a couple of things. Gary, you and I attended the League of Minnesota meeting that was at the Event Center, and I'll let you talk about that, because I have another little issue I'd like to talk about. I had a citizen approach me about his concerns on the ATF.
ATVs.
Ordinance that we have, ATF, ATV ordinances that we have. And he just really wanted to know the, the details of it, and I updated him. I also thought he had a concern with, with the weather being nicer now, they're seeing more of them and they're not abiding by the rules or by our regulations. So I thought it might be good for Mark to maybe update all of us on those rules.
Sure. Well, as you may recall, everyone except maybe Dave, three or four years ago, we did pass an ordinance which allowed ATV operation in the city of Hutchinson. And the requirements basically are that they have to be registered with the police department and then that registration lasts for, as I recall, up to three years. And you have to abide by all the rules and regulations of any other motor vehicle that's allowed on the roadways in Minnesota. If they're operated at night, they have to have headlights, taillights and brake lights. Mary had a chance to mention the situation to me a little bit earlier today, and I did have a chance to speak with Lieutenant Gipperson before the meeting and let him know of your concern and of the citizen's concern and I'm sure that the police department will be giving it the attention that it deserves then.
So for clarification, Mark, does that include like all side-by-sides and like just regular four-wheelers or what is that?
Yeah, the ones that are allowed in town are what they call the Class Two, which are the side-by-side ATVs. And as part of that ordinance, we also allowed mini trucks, which you might, I believe the city uses a couple of them for some of the landscaping around town. Right? And then, as we've always had, at least as long as I've been here, we also allow golf cart operation, and again, those things have to be registered with the police department.
And there's one thing I, I want to clarify, 'cause I know, you know, I've heard misinformation about, oh, why does a city require a license? State actually says that for ATVs to be driven on a city street, there has to be an ordinance that allows for it.
Right.
So that's really a state issue, we're not, I mean, we're required, or if ATV drivers wanna drive in town, the city's required to approve an ordinance.
Right.
That doesn't, that's by state man, mandate, not necessarily.
Yeah, ATVs are not automatically allowed to be operated in cities unless the city passes an ordinance setting forth requirements for those operations.
I guess that's what, when you brought it up, Mary, and kind of what you said, Chad, I've been seeing some of the other, just.
Smaller ones, just the four-wheelers.
Four-wheelers running and those aren't allowed.
Correct. It has to be the Class Two, which are the, you can sit side-by-side.
Yeah, bench seats and.
Right.
Thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Dave, you have anything?
I like turkeys.
Are you feeding them?
I really don't have anything other than turkeys, because they are, of course, a big flock the other morning going to work. I went a little bit late and on Second, Second Avenue, right off of Dale, going east. If there wasn't, if there was one, there was thirty in that group and they moved off of ours, off of our lot though, and then they went north-south and now they're coming back north again, so they're headed toward the river.
They, they do a lot of damage if, if they are roosting anywhere close to your house.
Well, they do a lot of damage on your bird feeders too.
Yeah.
When you say don't feed the turkeys, you know, they fly up on your bird feeders and they help themselves regardless, and they knock enough stuff out of the feeders to feed the flock on the ground, so, you know, typically, with the amount of chickadees and nuthatches and sparrows and the finches and whatever else what you have in the yard, it's almost ridiculous to try and take all that away from a little bird, just so the big birds can't eat, so. I have my.
Yep.
My will. But otherwise, nothing.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Matt?
Um, just a couple reminders, I guess. Obviously, the last councilman, you did approve the formation of the Sustainability Board, and so we are looking for applicants to, to fill that board, so we can get that appointed. I'm not sure if we have any interested, but applicants sitting out there.
I don't believe so at this point, no.
So just maybe a heads up to the council, if you know of anybody who may be interested, and to the public who's watching on TV, there is an opportunity for, if that's something you're interested in, for some public representation on our Sustainability Board, so. Just another plug for if you're interested in attending the, the annual League of Minnesota Cities Conference, that's in Duluth this year at the end of June. And then I've, just for the council's knowledge, because it has been a part of a couple of our legislative priorities, I have sent some communication in recent days to our representatives regarding local government aid. It sounds like there's been some conversation about expanding that. Some of it was to limit just the cities that are under five thousand, and so I know I had the Coalition contacting me and I did reach out to our, our local representatives. And then also regarding Health and Human Service Bill with the twenty-one, when it comes to tobacco and vaping, I have sent out just a letter on behalf of the city on both of those items, as we've identified those in our legislative priorities, so. That's it for me.
Well, why don't you touch a little bit on our meeting, Matt?
Sure.
That we had, 'cause I know me and Mary attended with you and we had, I think you put out feelers to the surrounding communities.
There was about fifteen communities that I had.
Represented it, yeah.
To, you know, it was something that the league had started doing roughly about two years ago, where as they're going out doing some of their training, they had some of their safety classes, they've tried to set up these, what they're calling simply engagement meetings in areas, and I was contacted by the league about hosting one, of which we did last Wednesday, and we sent out invitations to the, I think about fifteen neighboring communities, and we probably had ten, eleven of those have represented that showed up. And it was about an hour and a half meeting and it was just simply, the league just said, hey, what's, what are you guys struggling with, what issues? And it was a good conversation, quite frankly, to hear, it's a lot of the same stuff that, you know, I think we're all dealing with, you know, I think the biggest issue is, at least for those small communities, as we talked about earlier, was daycare.
Daycare.
Was brought up and I'm surprised to see a Bu, City of Buffalo Lake has invested quite
In their water, in their water.
Yep, and then, you know, and also, yeah, another big issue was the permitting when it comes to wastewater and water plants, and then just funding for streets. Those are kind of, I guess, the three, you know, biggest issues that were shared by our neighboring communities, so it was a good conversation, it was good to kind of get everybody in the room and.
It was good, and it was good to meet those other people that we, I hadn't met before.
Yeah.
They have this, a lot of the same concerns we do, just on a smaller plate.
Yeah, they're, I guess their, their infrastructure too is, is, you know, starting to fail and to get funding for that, they're, you know, they're, they're struggling with trying to keep up with that too, so. But, yeah, it was a good conversation.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask one question? Kind of with Kent, but when you mentioned the permitting.
Yeah.
And last meeting, we talked about update with wastewater plant and where we're at with permitting and, again, some of the lack of consistency with how they work with communities. I mean, I know there's been lawsuits before and, you know, is that kind of still going on or, you know, with other communities or?
Yeah, there's, there's objections out there. With respect to individual permits issued on specific communities.
So that's really how it's dealt with, is individuals.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I think even, I think was it Glanco?
Winston. Or no, Glanco did have.
Yeah, 'cause that was part of our conversation at the regional about how should some of the lawsuits.
Yeah, legal course. Ultimately, they, they, their issue was addressed through funding, I believe, you know. Their, the parameters, I don't believe, changed significantly from the original permit proposed, but they were able to acquire a fair amount of funding to, to build their, well, ultimately to build their proposed wastewater treatment plan to meet the parameters imposed on them.
'Cause I think Winston did go through that like a couple of years ago, correct? Yeah. They had some issues over there too.
Yeah, there, there's numerous issues that, you know, it's one of those things I don't think you wanna, either from the PCA standpoint or the municipality standpoint, you wanna shed a lot of light on, you know, nobody, one of those things, nobody wins kind of deal, you know, 'cause.
It's there, but nobody wants to talk about it.
You're objective from an environmental standpoint, you don't want the best, and then you don't wanna paint the PCA in too bad a light, they gotta be your, your partner going forward regardless, stop right of wastewater treatment plant, so. We have a meeting next week, you know, Gary and Matt, it's kind of a formality meeting through the permitting process. PCA staff will come out, engage administration and stakeholders, policymakers, and really just touch base where, where we're at, what the next steps are, and then we go from there. And they're really waiting on us, I guess in summary, to answer your question where this is heading, Steve, is, is we basically know the parameters that are coming our direction, and now we're formulating through our wastewater facility assessment that we're having a consultant undertake for us, and we're getting to a point where we see that being finalized, hopefully in the next month or two. Once we know that, we can start really having a true honest discussion with PCA permitting staff. This is what these parameters mean to us going forward. And then there's, they have variances and, you know, they can assign timeframes as far as meeting those parameters, you know, that are farther out into the future, so. Yeah, and ultimately, at the end of the day, the longer we take to arrive at the new permit, the more favorable that is to us just to continue to operate under the parameters of our existing permit, so we're in no hurry, mainly.
Just to be clear, we're already meeting some pretty stringent requirements that other communities don't even have to meet, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
All right, otherwise, just everybody be careful over the weekend.
Next couple of days.
Next couple of days, of course, should be used to it. We had one last year, so hopefully, John, I hope you're all ready for the, for this weekend.
Somebody asked if they took the clouds off already, and I said, nah, I don't think so.
We've learned from the past six months.
All righty, so I guess adjournments in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.